Commissioner Sakowicz. Commissioner Colati.
Present.
Commissioner Gold. Commissioner Foreman. Commissioner Ellerby.
Present.
Commissioner Derso.
Present.
Third Vice Chairman Lewis.
Present.
Vice Chairman Greenfield.
Present.
And Chairman Shapiro.
Present.
Can I, may I have a motion for the acknowledgement of the receipt of transcript from the August 10th Planning Commission hearing? Second. Starting with Agenda Section B, Minor Subdivision Applications. First up, we have NCPC File Number 39 of 2023. This is an application for a lot line adjustment at 3563 to 3577 Maple Court and Linden Place in the Hamlet of Oceanside in the Town of Hempstead's Industrial Zoning District. The 3.46 acre subject property is situated on the north side of Linden Place. The application proposes to convey 8,233 square feet from the eastern portion of Parcel 1 to the western portion of Parcel 2 by means of a lot line adjustment. Proposed Parcel 1 to the west would be a total of 2.4932 acres after the reapportionment, and Proposed Parcel 2 to the east would now be a total of 42,133 square feet or .96 acres. Town of Hempstead Department of Buildings has issued a letter of zoning compliance for the proposed subdivision, and the application is considered as of right. This case was previously heard at the June 15, 2023, NCPC hearing and was approved. It is before the Planning Commission, again, seeking an approval for an amended survey that now includes a 679-square-foot triangular piece that was mistakenly left out of the previously approved reapportionment. Here today representing the applicant, I believe we have George Peters.
Yeah, I got, George got taller.
Good morning.
Mike's absent, so it's still in Baylen, Adler, and Hyman for the applicant. We were here two months ago, and the matter was approved. We had a discrepancy between our office and our surveyor, and we lost a triangular piece out here. If you look at the picture with the survey, I don't know if we can get it up there. You could see all the way in the right lower corner, there's a little piece, a little triangular piece. And that's the piece that was cut off when I was here last time, and we didn't apply for it. The reason that piece is important is because behind the second parcel, the parcel that's being conveyed, is Long Island Railroad. So the only way to turn into that really is over that little triangular piece. The triangular piece is really a necessary part, a very small part of the property, and we would ask that the application be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
I don't know. Counselor, you mean you lost it? It was circumcised off of it? I was confused how you lost it. I'm glad you found it, though, because I do recall the railroad being there.
I know better than to respond to Mr. Greenfield's.
Good to see you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Is there anybody in the public that wishes to be heard? Not seeing any, I'll take a motion.
Motion to approve NCPC File 39-2023.
I'll second it.
With a type 2.
Yes, type 2 secret.
With a type 2.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
So carried.
So carried.
Okay, next we have up is NCP File 50-23. It's a two-parcel minor subdivision located at 90 Sunset Drive in Hempstead, in the Incorporated Village of Hempstead. The 14,498.86 square feet subject area, sorry, area subject property is situated on the west side of Sunset Drive in the Village of Hempstead's Residential AA zoning district. The application proposes to subdivide the property, which has 110.7 feet of frontage on Sunset Drive, into two separate parcels. Proposed Parcel A will have 50 feet of frontage on Sunset Drive by 129.71 feet, for a total of 6,540.84 square feet. Proposed Parcel B will have a 60.7, .07 feet of frontage on Sunset Drive by 133.73 feet, for a total square footage of 7,958. The Incorporated Village of Hempstead Planning Board has issued a letter of approval and zoning compliance for the proposed subdivision. The application is considered as of right. Speaking now, we have Mike Gregory from Permits R Us.
Thank you, Mr. Wren.
Good morning. Name and address for the record, please?
Yes. Michael Gregory of Permits R Us LLC, 204 Westbury Avenue, Car Place, New York, 11514. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here representing the applicant who wishes to subdivide the proposed parcel, the existing parcel, into two lots. The existing dwelling will remain as is and will sit on a 7,958-square-foot lot, where the Village of Hempstead requires 5,000 square feet, 2,958 square feet over the existing zoning. The proposed dwelling will be a proposed single-family dwelling, which will sit on a 6,540-square-foot lot, where the village requires 5,000 square feet. The existing proposed dwelling meets all the current setbacks, no variants were requested. The application was heard in front of the Village Planning Board of Hempstead on July 16. The decision was rendered on July 19. We received the decision on July 27. So we're here today requesting approval so the deeds could be recorded and permits can be issued.
You know, the property is quite large currently, I mean, for a single-family home, all right? So you're able to allow for this plan to have two homes on that one lot that are both fully compliant?
Yes.
You're not asking for a variance on it?
No. It's actually, besides the parcel to the south, these lots are the biggest lots in the entire 200-foot radius.
And, you know, it's nice to see if it's a possibility, and in this case you are, you're able to maintain the existing home, so it's not a tear down.
No.
Commissioners, any other questions? We do have one speaker, Mr. Rug, Carl Rug. Name and address for the record, please?
Carl Rug, 34 Fairway, Hempstead. My family is currently owners of 70 Parsons, which is around the corner from Dix Lane and four houses up on Parsons. In researching this, he goes, I noticed that the property, as the gentleman previously stated, does conform with the village's requirement for the building of the new home. But he goes, led to believe that, he goes, the initial people that bought the house had no intention of moving in or putting any residents in, that they had their total decision-making was to subdivide the property to begin with. So for all intents and purposes, this is a business venture by the seven people that are listed on the deed that's currently on file with the county. Now, if that's the case, then where are we going to go from here on in? Because the four properties that govern the Country Club Estates area, Parsons, Sunset, Dix Lane, that, and on the west side of the golf course, that'll be Long Drive, Fairway, and Park Place, what's the next thing that you're going to go after? These are some of the most pristine parcels in the village. Now, having been a resident of the village for 52 years, he goes, people pride themselves by having this property. If you were looking to move in, I'd say fine. But he goes, the house that the gentleman is speaking on at 90 is currently still on the rolls for sale. It was sold three months ago, and the Libra Page was recorded here in the county. But he goes, to turn around and put another home on a parcel of land that's already basically been sold as a residential area, it sort of defeats the purpose for the neighbors. You're adding additional vehicles in the street area. Parking is a premium in the community to begin with. There's nothing listed on the diagram for any type of garage area, so the cars are going to be parked on the street. It's not taking into consideration the infrastructure of the neighborhood. He goes, having been a former fire chief of the community, I says, it's just adding another residence to the tax rolls. I mean, granted, the majority of the downtown area's been sold off for multi-residential complexing, and that's where the village is going. But he goes, to turn around and say that this is going to be one and done, I don't foresee that happening, considering a larger areas of parcels in the community could possibly sustain additional housing.
Thank you.
Sir.
Sir.
Let me answer you this way. You make a very cogent argument, but that's not a matter before us. This argument that you just, or not argument, your issues that you state have to be brought to the attention to the Village Board.
Well, there was no filing to the community that this was coming before the Village Board.
No, the bigger picture issue that you spoke about with respect to future subdivisions. It was as of right, so you have to go to your elected officials in the village. I'm sure as an ex-chief, you have access to them.
Right.
And ask them to do a study of zoning in your area. I know exactly where it is. I've been to the country club there, and I'm familiar. And all your issues that you state have to be addressed by the Village Board in legislation to protect and preserve your residential character of your neighborhood.
Well, that's why I'm here, because...
Well, we can't change, we can't vote against something that's as of right. And you're, we hear this constantly. It's not unique to Hempstead, is what I was going to tell you. We hear it about people in the town of Hempstead, the town of North Hempstead, and other villages. So I'm sorry that I can't offer you more relief here today from our standpoint. But you do have one good question that I want to ask the applicant to answer is with respect to the garage and the off-street parking issue. How do you plan on that? And I don't know what the Hempstead Code says with respect to that.
Thank you. The existing dwelling has a detached two-car garage with a two-car driveway, so it will house four cars, where two are required by the village, off-street parking. The proposed dwelling does have a one-car attached garage, and will have a two-car driveway, proposed driveway, allowing for three cars off-street parking. So we more than meet the requirements of the Village of Hempstead for off-street parking.
May I suggest that after this hearing that you have a chat with the chief?
Of course.
And meet with him outside and review with him in detail, because he's a concerned neighbor, and you have to have respect for him and his opinion that he has. And I'm asking you to do that also as a 48-year first responder in Rockville Center, Chief.
I will.
Okay? And fire response and volunteer, especially in Hempstead, is, we go there a lot from Rockville Center on mutual aid. So I understand you have to provide for housing for young people and ask them to join the fire department also, and give of their time, like the chief did, I'm sure, for many years.
Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else wish to be heard from the public? Okay, come on up. Please fill out a speaker registration form. If you have it, you can just hand it to staff. Name and address for the record, please?
Good morning. My name is Brandy Watson. I am a resident at 22 Sunset Drive. I concur with my neighbor from Long Drive that the area is pristine and has remained so for a number of years. Obviously, that is not a question to be posed here. That is for our local elected officials. However, I do have one question regarding notification. We, as residents, were not notified of this hearing. We heard it through the grapevine, and that's the reason why we're here today. I'd like to know who is responsible for notifying residents in a situation like this?
There is, the County Charter has the rules and regulations as to who gets notice. And I assume the fact that the case is on today, that the required notices were sent out in the proper form, and that the receipts have been filed. Is that correct, Mr. Gregory?
Yes, and I believe you said you were at number 22 Sunset Drive?
That is correct.
Yes, you were not in the 200-foot radius, so you were not notified.
And that's per the County Charter, who gets notice?
All right. I'm also here representing our civic association, which is the Hemp, which is the Country Club Estates Civic Association. We have been an association for the past 13 years. And again, we have other neighbors here that are within that 200-foot radius that also were not notified. That is all I have to say. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
Staff, what were you going to say? You have the cards and the notification?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
The mail-in receipts are handed in to Mr. ...
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that for the record, Mr. Gregory.
Thank you.
Also, sir, I see you standing. Do you want to speak? Okay, come on up. Name and address for the record, and if you have a speaker registration form, please hand it in. Anybody else that's here for any of the cases? If you wish to speak, please fill out the speaker registration form, which is over on the desk on the side there, and hand it in so we can call you appropriately.
Good morning. Charles Renfro, 54 Sunset Drive in Hempstead. And I am in that 200, in that radius, and I did not get notified. Without being redundant on what the people that spoke just before me is that if you've been in that neighborhood, you know what it's all about, and you know how we take care of our property. And throughout the village, there's a problem with parking all over the place. I don't know if it's too late for us to do anything about it, but I tell you that I oppose this move simply because the property in the neighborhood, we have X amount of property there that that we care about and that we take care of. And our civic association is very active, and we don't, we don't want to divide property in our neighborhood. I don't know if it's too late, too late, like I said before, but if there's anything that we can do, trust me that we are going to do it.
Sir, as I said to the ex-chief, your civic association has to go to your village leaders. It's not too late for the next one, but it's this one is, it's as of right. And if we vote against it, we will just be getting litigation unnecessarily to the county, which will lose. It's not a winning hand. And I'm very familiar with the neighborhood, and it's very lovely, and it's very nice. The firehouse is nearby there. And you have a great argument for the village officials to make some amendments to the code and do a study and address the parking issue, subdivisions, side yard setbacks between the homes. If they increase the side yard setback between the homes, it's less likely to be as-of-right subdivision, and then they have to have a zoning variance hearing before the Village of Hempstead zoning board, and then a referral comes to us on what's called our zoning calendar. But this subdivision is something that we would be hard-pressed to deny. There are no legal grounds for us to deny it.
So the horses are already gone?
Yeah, on this one, but please, please be vigilant before the next one, because you live in a lovely neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
And there are other parcels that can be subdivided in that neighborhood. So it would be to your best interest to go to your village officials and have them do a study and have them try to change the zoning.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Anybody else in the public wish to be heard? Not seeing anybody, I will take a motion, Commissioners?
I'll make a motion to approve NCPC Minor Subdivision 50-2023 with a negative declaration. I'll second.
Aye. Mr. Gregory, don't forget to meet with the good neighbors outside.
Yes, thank you.
And neighbors, please talk to Mr. Gregory, get their card, because they're in the course of construction. Things don't go well, call him.
Thank you.
Just have one announcement real quick before I go on to the next case. Anyone from the public that is here for NCPC File 53 of 61 Manor Drive in Great Neck? That case is being adjourned today. It'll be heard on October 5. Thank you.
Like at the track.
That's it. Next we have, we have NCPC File 51-23. It's a lot line adjustment at 41 Mimosa Drive in East Hills in the Town of North Hempstead's Residential 1 District. The 17,897-square-foot subject property area situated on the northeast corner of Roslin Road and Harbor Hill in the Incorporated Village of East Hills, residential residents in the Town of North Hempstead's R1 District. The application proposes to convey 1,415 square feet from the southeastern portion of Parcel A, previously 15,464 square feet, to the western portion of Parcel B, previously 2,433 square feet, by means of a lot line adjustment. The new, the proposed Parcel A on Roslin Road will now be a total of 14,049 square feet after the reapportionment, with Parcel B on Harbor Hill Road will be a total of 3,848 square feet. The Incorporated Villages of East Hill and Roslin have no objection to this proposed lot line adjustment. Appearing now for us is Said Solmen. I apologize if I said that wrong.
Good morning. My name is Said Solimani. 55 Northern Mulvassuit, Number 210, Great Neck, New York. We are doing the lot line adjustment of a very small portion to be dedicated to the village, as it was no use for the owner and the new lot was a waste of place, but they could use it. And they are going to make it as a adjustment for their historical landmark that they are going to beautify and make it. It was necessary and very justified to give it to the Village of East Hills. They have accepted it, and we are here to just do a very small lot line adjustment.
Thank you. Just for the record, it's 14 Mimosa Drive is the address of the...
Yes, that is the site location.
Just wanted to make sure.
14 Mimosa. The lots have been subdivided and has been applied, and we have house numbers for all of the lot number 26. It is going to be 26 Gate House Court.
All right, do we have a letter in the file, or do you have a letter to submit to us from the village, accepting this?
We have submitted it already.
Okay, just to make sure we have it in the file?
Yes.
Is no one, is anyone here from the village? No?
No one is here from.
And essentially, you're increasing the land that the village is going to have for this
Yes.
site that they're going to maintain.
Yes.
It's going to be their responsibility to maintain it, and it'd be something nice for the community. So it's a, it's a positive thing from the perspective that you're enhancing what would be held by the village.
That's right.
Thank you very much.
Hey, I passed there. You're working away there.
Yeah.
And what are they going to do? There was an entranceway to the former site there? The village is going to?
Yes, the village is taking over.
Okay, I look forward to seeing you.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Is there anybody in the public that wishes to be heard? Not seeing anybody, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve NCPC File 51-2023 with a negative declaration. I'm sorry. I apologize. With a type 2. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next up is NCPC File 52-2023. This is a two, it's a two-parcel minor subdivision at 85 Beechwood Avenue in Roosevelt. The 12,834-square-foot subject property is situated on the north side of Beechwood Avenue in the Hamlet of Roosevelt in the Town of Hempstead's Residential B zoning district. The application proposes to divide the property, which has 100 feet of frontage on Travis Street, into two equal parcels. Proposed lots 1 and 2 will have 50 feet of frontage by 100 feet, for a total of 6,417 square feet parcel area. The Town of Hempstead Board of Appeal has approved the request for variances. Lot A and Lot B have the same variance, so I'll just read it once. Variances, subdivisions of lots, front width from an on-street line to front setback line to construct a dwelling with a garage. And that is the same for A and B. We have Jed Nelson from Long Island Atlantic Coastal Realty Group here to speak for you.
Good morning. Name and address for the record, please?
By all means. I'm sorry. Jed Nelson, Long Island Atlantic Coast Realty, 1380 Belmore Avenue, Belmore, New York, 11710. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I guess the case was already made for us, but I'll just cover a few of the aspects here. As the property presently exists, it is the largest parcel in the neighborhood. It affords 12,834 square feet. The proposed application is to subdivide the parcel equally to 6,417 square feet each. They will afford 50 feet of street frontage pursuant to the zoning board of appeal's approval for the variance. The parcels still remain approximately 75% larger than any existing parcel in this neighborhood. The proposed applications are for two colonial-style homes. They will have one-car internal garages, parking pads for an additional two to three cars, affording onsite parking as required. That's basically our case. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Commissioners. Anybody have any questions? Is there anybody in the public that wishes to be heard? Not seeing anybody, I will take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve NCPC File Number 52-2023 with a negative declaration.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. You're welcome. Next is 53 of 2023. We need an adjournment on that, so can I have a motion for an adjournment till October 5? Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, Greg.
Thanks. Next, we have NCPC File 54 of 2023. This is an application for a two-lot subdivision at 100 Linden Street in the Hamlet of Roslin Heights in the Town of North Hempstead's Residential C zoning district. This is a 12,000-square-foot area subject property situated on the southeast corner of Linden Street and Jane Street. The application proposes to subdivide the property, which has 120 feet of frontage on Linden Street, into two equal parcels. Both proposed Lot A and proposed Lot B will have 60 feet of frontage on Linden Street with a depth of 100 feet, and will both be 6,000 square feet each. The Town of North Hempstead Department of Building, Safety, Inspection, and Enforcement has issued a letter of zoning compliance for the proposed subdivision, and the application is considered as of right. Here today representing the applicants, we have Bruce Miggitts.
Good morning. Bruce W. Miggitts, Law Firm, Albany's in Albany's, 1050 Franklin Avenue, Garden City, for the applicant. 1050 Franklin Avenue, Garden City, for the applicant. This is a as-of-right subdivision. The property is in a Resident C zone of the town of North Hempstead, which requires 5,000 square feet per buildable lot. These lots will each have 6,000 square feet of buildable lot. The radius map demonstrates that all but three of the lots within a 200-foot radius are 6,000 square feet or less. So there are only three... I'm sorry, there are four lots that are larger than 6,000 square feet. So these proposed lots are definitely not only in compliance with the zoning code, but also in compliance with the character of the neighborhood. I would note that a two-family house could be built on this property as of right. So there is no increase in density. The intention is to have the existing house remain and then to build a second house on the new lot. So there'd be two single-family houses, whereas a one-two-family house could be built. So there's no increase in density. Commissioner, has there any questions? I'm happy to answer them.
Off-speech parking, do you want to just speak to that? You're providing a driveway.
Yeah, the existing house complies with off-street parking. It has a garage, has a driveway. North Hempstead Building Apartment certifies that does comply with zoning. There is no design yet for the new house.
And it will comply with the zoning regulations?
Well, I can't guarantee that whoever buys that lot is going to design a house that complies with zoning. But if they don't, they have to go for a variance, and that will come back to you on your calendar.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions? Is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard? Not seeing any, I'll take a motion.
Motion to approve NCPC 54-2023 with a negative declaration. Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next up is NCPC File 55 of 2023. This is an application for a lot line adjustment at 8490 Curly Street in the city of Long Beach in the Residential FF zoning district. This is an 8,400-square-foot area subject property situated on the east side of Curly Street and also within 300 feet of the unincorporated area of Lidl Beach in the town of Hempstead. The application proposes to convey 1,120 square feet from the northern portion of Parcel B, which was previously 5,600 square feet, to the southern portion of Parcel A, which was previously only 2,800 square feet. Proposed Parcel A, 90 Curly Street, will have a frontage of 56 feet and be a total of 3,920 square feet after the reapportionment. Proposed Parcel B, which is 84 Curly Street, will now have a frontage of 64 feet and be a total of 4,480 square feet after the reapportionment. The city of Long Beach has issued a letter stating they have no objection to the subdivision and grouping of the above referenced properties. The subdivision and the grouping may be done as a matter of right. Here today representing the applicants, we have Dennis Kelly.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning. Name and address for the record.
My name is Dennis G. Kelly, 120 West Park Avenue, Long Beach, New York, 11561. An attorney here on behalf of the applicants. The applicants are one family. Michael and Susan Solomon own 90 Curly Street. Susan Solomon, maiden name Maxton, is the sibling of the co-trustees who own 84 Curly Street. And what they're seeking to do is formalize a reapportionment, which has kind of taken place, practically speaking, over the years because one man owned the properties. Jack Maxton bought 90 Curly Street back in 1953 and 84 Curly Street in 1958. We're seeking to reapportion the properties by having a lot line adjustment, which will move 16 feet from 84 Curly Street, 16 feet of width, to 90 Curly Street, thus making 90 Curly Street 56 by 70 and 84 Curly Street 64 by 70. So it sort of balances the two properties and adjusts it the way it's been treated now for literally decades.
Suffice to say, you were not there attorney in 53 or 58 to do it right originally.
No. Well, you know what? It is Long Beach and Mr. Maxton was a very good lawyer, ultimately a county court judge.
I thought I recognized the name.
Right. And they kind of adjusted it because they owned both properties. Ultimately, Mr. Maxton, Judge Maxton died in 2019, and the property, 84 Curly Street, was held in trust for the benefit of his wife Sandra, who passed away in August of 2022. So we're seeking to formalize it because the family's going to seek to sell 84 Curly Street.
And the key factor is that the smaller property is becoming larger.
That's correct, Commissioner.
That's why you said it's sort of a balancing out of the...
Yeah. Formally, as far as the county's concerned, 90 Curly Street has been 40 by 70 since 1953. And it does balance it out. And it makes both parcels still more or less conform with the zoning code.
Is a family member going to reside in the other property? Are they selling them both?
No, 90 Curly Street is Michael and Susan Solomon's property. That's their home.
Okay, are they here today? Are they here today?
No, they're not. Well, I do have Jeffrey Maxton, who is one of the co-trustees who owns 84 Curly Street, really the applicant, because they're the ones conveying the property if the commission permits.
That's okay. Good, good. We like to have applicants here.
Yes.
We got away from it during COVID, and now we're back to it.
Yeah, I tell all my clients going to zoning boards, I just need you to show up because they need to see who you are. And also because you're asking for something. Show up. So Mr. Maxton's here.
I like you, counselor. You're welcome back here anytime with that word of advice.
If you got the okay from him, you're in good shape. I appreciate that. Thank you.
You could ask Michael, who left early. He's absent.
Yes, I know him well as well. We're a small, small city.
I figured you knew him. Michael gave me a good answer. I texted him back. He answered me properly. But we know each other a lot of years.
Do you have any questions?
No.
Commissioners, any questions? Is there anybody in the public that wishes to be heard? Not seeing anybody, I will take a motion.
I'll make a motion. NCPC, I'm sorry, to approve NCPC File Number 55-2023 with a type 2 approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
It's a pleasure appearing before you.
Have a good day.
Last up, we have NCPC File 56 of 2023. This is an application for a lot line adjustment at 545 Franklin Avenue and 111 Michigan Avenue in the hamlet of Massapequa in the town of Oyster Bay's R17 zoning district. This is a 23,349-square-foot area subject property situated on the northwest corner of Michigan Avenue and Franklin Avenue. The application proposes to convey 2,218 square feet from the southern portion of Parcel B, which was previously 12,659 square feet, to the northern portion of Parcel A, which was previously 10,690 square feet by means of a lot line adjustment. Proposed Parcel A will now have 102 feet of frontage on Michigan Avenue and a depth of 118 feet and be a total of 12,908 square feet. And proposed Parcel B will have 82 feet of frontage on Franklin Avenue with a depth of 130 feet and be a total of 10,441 square feet. The Town of Oyster Bay Department of Planning and Development has issued a letter of zoning compliance for the proposed lot line adjustment, and the application is considered as of right. Here today representing the applicants, we have Ashley Lowe of Mark Anthony Architects Office.
Good morning, members of the commission. My name is Ashley Lowe from Mark Anthony Architects. Our office is located at 1563 Belmore Avenue in Belmore, New York. I am here today representing for our clients Joel and Linda Fröllinger, the owners and occupants of 111 Michigan Avenue. They do not occupy 545 Franklin Avenue. They are unfortunately not here today. They previously had a vacation scheduled in Maine, so I am here on their behalf. Both of these properties are located in the town of Oyster Bay, one family, R17 residential zone that must maintain a minimum of 7,000-square-foot lot area with a minimum of 70-foot width of lot of the street and 70-foot width of lot at the required rear yard. We are requesting a lot line adjustment to transfer 2,218 square feet of land from 545 Franklin Avenue, Lot 164, to go to 111 Michigan Avenue, Lot 20. The lot line adjustment will conform to Town of Oyster Bay's zoning codes. We previously went in front of the Town of Oyster Bay Zoning Board of Appeals on April 4 and were granted approval for the lot line adjustment in Decision 2361 by amending the previous Zoning Board of Appeals specific plan that was granted in 2013. That concludes our request. I can answer any questions.
Not anyone from the public? No questions from the members here? The other reason we like applicants to come here in case a member of the public has a question. So if there was a member of the public that had a question, I would postpone the case to a date when your applicants are not on vacation.
We previously went in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and we had approval from all of the applicants for them. So we were pretty confident that no neighbors were going to show up.
Good. We're looking to encourage that, but...
No, of course.
But I like full houses for meetings.
I agree.
And perform better. My attorney does it. I like an audience.
I think it's better when they show face. I agree.
Okay, not hearing, seeing anyone in the public wishing to speak, we'll entertain a motion at this time.
I'll make a motion. NCPC File Number 56-2023 to approve with a type 2... I'm sorry, type 2 approval. Second.
All in favor, so signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? So carry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Something popped up on my phone. Okay, the zoning calendar we're up to. And put Case 2 aside from the... All the LDs, give us the short form.
We have two modifications if you looked at the...
Yes.
The next one, Case Number 3, in East Rockaway also. Unless the Commissioner has any issues.
We just want you to do on the short form, read the cases, not in detail just what we're LDing because we've all gone through them already.
You're not voting? Sometimes when you just vote on them, we don't read them.
Just give us the case numbers for the LDs. That's all I want you to read into the record. I want to be out of here by 11:00. You have four minutes, Marty. Five minutes.
First case, NCPC Case Number 8812310 at Hempstead Hamlet of Lubbock Town for site plan review for a two-story self-storage facility in a medical office building previously heard by the planning commission a while back, and a subdivision was granted a while back also. This is for site plan review. That was issued. Staff is recommending LD. Case Number 4 is NCPC Case Number 825223 at Hempstead Hamlet, East Meadow. This is for special exception sign variances for a proposed Chick-fil-A fast food restaurant on Hempstead Turnpike. We've got traffic study on this. We've got parking study. It seems to work quite well. And staff is recommending local determination on that one. Case Number 5, this is NCPC Case Number 824123, Village of Mineola for a special use permit for inclusion in development. Inclusion in the development incentive bonus overlay is a... We talked about this at the pre-meeting. We had the representation from the applicant's attorney and the applicant at present. This is a proposed redevelopment of two properties comprising 2.4 acres with a 240-unit multifamily residential building at the 1.27-acre Old Country Road Site, the South Building, and a 250-unit multifamily residential building on a 1.08-acre front street site, the North Building. And we went through this in quite a lot of detail at the pre-meeting, and traffic impact study was prepared. That concluded...
Marty, if I could just interject on this one. You know, a number of... As planners, we always try and encourage planning ahead. And some villages, and in this case, the village of Mineola is one of them, have done master plans or sat back and sort of looked forward and engaged with the community. And what you're seeing is now, a number of years afterwards, that plan is still providing a benefit because it gives a context for these kinds of developments. So when we see the numbers here of almost 500 units, but then we realize, well, wait a minute, but this is part of and is consistent with the master plan that was adopted some, I think it's eight years or so ago. So we've seen that in some other villages, but just wanted to point out that this is a positive thing when a village goes through that kind of process where they comply with CEQA, they engage with the community, and they come up with a plan. And then the plan can make future development a little bit easier and a little bit quicker as it goes forward. This is one of those cases.
Even so, I want to get out of here. I want to echo Commissioner Lewis's remarks. Here we have a successful developer in the community repurposing an obsolete office building that will continue to run down as the people's work style changes into badly needed residential housing. And it's the foresight of the village as well as a developer with a good track record that makes this possible.
Staff recommends local determination for that one. And item number 6 on the zoning agenda is NCPC Case Number 831123. This is in the Village of Beesills. It's an amendment to the zoning code. And this is essentially... To... The Village of Beesills would like to ensure that all onsite wastewater treatment systems installed for new and substantially improved homes will not pose a threat to public health or cause any degradation of ground or surface water quality. The proposed law will require the use of nitrogen-reducing, innovative and alternative onsite wastewater treatment systems, A1 sanitary systems, it's called, as a standard for all new residential construction for any subsequent improvements to an existing residential building. 50%, and we haven't seen one of these.
That's what I was going to say. This is something that has generated a lot of debate in Suffolk County where vast majority of the county is not sewered. Nassau County, the vast majority is sewed, but we still do have a number of places that do not have sewers. And in this day and age, we really should be looking at legislation like this and to cover all the areas that are not currently sewed.
We may see more down the road because this is the first one we...
And frankly, it should be sort of the standard, whether it's adopted as zoning or whether it's something that's looked at from... Well, there are going to be times that we get, you know, zoning applications or subdivision applications, I mean. And in those cases, the question of advanced sanitary should be raised. And I do recall raising this question a couple of years ago with one applicant. And the argument was, well, the houses are spread out so much. We don't have to worry about it. I think the standard has changed. This is the new standard. We need to have advanced sanitary for any new home construction in our county. That's something I think is, you know, really it's time that we catch up with that standard. So I commend the village for doing this and hope that this becomes the standard more broadly.
And one more?
One more, and then we'll vote.
Case Number 7, NCPC Case Number 911123. This is within the village of Hempstead. This is for use variances, area dimensional variances, height variances. Ensure the proposed four-story, 24-unit senior apartment building on a split-zone property on a little over 9,000 square feet. It's essentially a shoehorned development, but we see a lot of that in the village of Hempstead, particularly along South Franklin Avenue. And it's right now... And it's right now partially vacant property. And even though it is a shoehorn, I... Staff is recommending local determination to provide an improvement to a property that is essentially vacant right now.
Okay. You heard the cases. We'll entertain a motion for LD on...
Mr. Vice Chair, I'll make a motion to LD NCPC Agenda Items 1, 4, 5, 6, and 7.
Motion made. Do we have a second? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So carry. I just want to amend one thing on my remarks on Mineola, that the applicant is also guided by a well-schooled municipal attorney that understands the seascape at hand. I'm sure you'll have a good zoning hearing. Okay. Now, the two modifications.
Okay.
Number two, we'll take first.
Okay. This is NCPC Case Number 89123, Village of Lawrence. This is a for area dimensional variances, I guess you could say a use variance. This is a proposed 33-lot subdivision located in... Within a recently created coastal conservation zoning district on a portion of the Woodmere Country Club. This conservation district encompasses all of the Country Club. This particular referral is for a portion of the Country Club site, which is 118 acres. Ten of these proposed parcels are partially located within the Village of Lawrence and within the Village of Woodsburg. These lots range in size from 18,000 square feet to 32,000 square feet. The Village of Lawrence, however, requires a minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet. While each of these lots has a lot area exceeding 15,000 square feet, the portion of these lots within the Village of Lawrence of each of these lots is less than the required 15,000 square feet, thus variances are required. In addition, 23 other lots being proposed for the subdivision are located in an area designated as open space recreation slash recreation within the coastal conservation district. It should be noted that this district, the coastal conservation district, was created a couple of years back by a coordinator by the Town of Hempstead, the Village of Lawrence, and the Village of Woodsburg for the Woodmere Country Club property that was sold to a developer in order to reduce the yield of the subdivision of the 118-acre Woodmere Country Club purchased by a developer initially to develop 285 single-family lots that at that time was permissible initially under the prevailing zoning designation within the The coastal zone conservation district resulted in... That was created resulted in a yield of 59 single-family lots and a preservation of a significant amount of open space and environmentally sensitive space and low-lying areas prone to flooding. Staff is recommending a modification of this proposed subdivision referral from the Town of Lawrence. I see no problem in issuing the variance... The village issuing the variance for the 10 parcels that straddle the two villages because they all exceed the 15,000 square feet in total. However, the 23 proposed parcels in the area within the Conservation Coastal Zone designated as open space recreation should be eliminated because it goes against the tenants of the Coastal Conservation District. And the creation of that district went before the planning commission some years back, and the commission supported the creation of this district for that specific purpose, to preserve open space and ecological...
That's exactly right. This was a process that involved the county's referral, but also involved the town and neighboring village. So to have multiple jurisdictions coming together to say that they wanted to protect this land, and now only a few years later to see a proposal to build 23 houses on that lot. It's a variance, but really it's an action in violation of the Coastal Conservation District that was created just a few years ago. So I would recommend either that we just straight out deny that, or perhaps as recommended by staff, that we do this, make a motion for a modification. And the modification would be to eliminate the 23 lots that are in the Coastal Conservation District while providing an LD for the other 10 lots. So that's my motion for a modification on NCPC Case 89123.
I'll second that.
Motion made and second on a modification on agenda item number two.
Okay, we have one more.
No voting on each one separate?
Okay.
All those in favor of this one, case number two? Aye. Any opposed? So carry. Okay, now we'll do this modification separate because each modification is different.
Right. Yeah, this is case number three in the zoning agenda. This is NCPC Case Number 825123. This is located within the Village of East Rockaway. This is for use area slash dimensional height and parking variances. This is a proposed four-story, 36-unit apartment building on a 32,888 square foot subject property. Multifamily buildings are not permitted in a commercial A zoning district in which this property is located. A height variance is required where maximum 2.5, 35 feet permitted and four stories at 40 feet proposed. Also insufficient lot area, minimum lot area of 1.5 acres required. After that, 1.75 acres proposed. Finally, a parking variance is required with a minimum of 72 parking spaces, required 51 parking spaces proposed. 27 units are two-bedroom units, nine units are one-bedroom units. Surface parking as well as garages are provided. Access is provided via an enter-only driveway on Atlantic Avenue, which I think is a county road at the south end of the property, and an exit-only driveway onto Atlantic Avenue at the north end of the property. The subject property is occupied by... If you can go to the frame, you know, it's occupied by three-frame dwellings, office residential structures, or two-family structures along the east side of Atlantic Avenue. And not a strip of storefronts, that's not part of it, okay? Just those framed structures, which will be demolished. To the east along Albert Place are single-family homes. To the south is a commercial building and a strip of stores. To the west across Atlantic Avenue is a gas station, convenience store, and a one-story commercial building. To the north extending about 50 feet to James Street is a village parking lot beyond which, across James Street, is the village hall. Atlantic Avenue is two lanes along the site's frontage. Parking is permitted on the east side of Atlantic Avenue and along the west side of Atlantic Avenue north of the subject property. Staff is recommending a modification. The current plan is an over-intensification on a lot that is 50% smaller than what is required for what they are building. That is four stories where a maximum of two and a half stories are permitted, nor are there's four-story buildings in the area. That is providing no landscaped area and all impervious surface area. No green space, no anything. As far as I can see, it's only parking areas, access aisles, and building. And also, it's 30% deficient in parking. Staff feels that the plan should be scaled down. Also, workforce housing set aside should be addressed, so staff is recommending modification.
Okay, you heard from staff? Do we have a motion?
Wait, wait. We can't really...
Can't really do the motion for modification without specific numbers.
Okay.
So you're saying scale down, but are you saying from four stories to three? Are you saying...
I would go... Yeah. I would scale the number of stories down to three. And I would also like to see some landscaped setback areas along Atlantic Avenue or something that provides, rather than all impervious surface area. I mean, I can't really get specific, but it should be scaled down. It should be reduced in the footprint, should be reduced in size somewhat, and they should eliminate a story.
Okay, make that into a motion.
Okay. So the motion for... So I'm making a motion for modification to reduce the proposal from four stories to three and to also provide some additional amenities and landscaping at the site.
Can we add to address the parking situation as well?
And that'll also make parking... Contain more parking on site by doing that.
So you'll incorporate that in your...
Yeah.
The write-up. We'll incorporate. Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. All those in favor? Aye. All right. See you all on October 5th. Lenny's going to be away. I'm coming back the night before, and we need the other two members here.